Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is November the 21st, 2017, 6:00 PM, City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street here in Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to start the meeting off first by introducing our guest today, Ms. Kennedy Gibson. Kennedy Gibson is an 11-year-old, fifth grade at Oakwoods Elementary. She is going to help us out tonight with bringing in our consent agenda and our pledges. She is currently on the Student Council at Oakwood. She has also been a part of the Quanah Super Citizens, the Shining Star Awards, the A Honor Roll, forever, I guess, right? And she has also been commended on the All-Stars Test. And also, she qualified for the Nationals in gymnastics. Also, she comes with a statement from her teacher. I don't know if she's heard this or not yet, but the teacher says that Kennedy creates a positive environment in the classroom. She comes into the classroom every day with a smile on her face and ready to work. Kennedy is very cooperative, kind, and well-respected by the others. She is often encouraged by those around her to do better and set higher goals. Because of this, her peers often look to her for guidance. Not only is she a role model to her classmates, but to the rest of the students at Oakwood. So let's give Kennedy a hand.[92.00][92.00](APPLAUSE). Ms. Kennedy is going to help us out also with our pledges. I'd like to now introduce our Pastor Marin Cardon with the Brazos Covenant Ministry Church to lead us in our invitation, followed by the Pledge Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Ms. Kennedy Gibson. All rise, please.
I want to read as part of my prayer one of my favorite scriptures that makes me smile about living in Granbury. He has made from one blood every nation of men to dwell on the face of the earth and has determined beforehand the time we would live in and even where we would live so that we should seek Him in the hope that we would find Him, although He's not far from each of us, for in Him we live and move and have our being. So Father, I just, first of all, want to thank you. We recognize you. We honor you. I want to thank you for living in this time. Thank you for the gift of Granbury, Texas. Thank you for making this our boundaries. And Father, tonight, we stand to bless this city. Lord, we bless this meeting tonight. We thank you that wisdom comes from you. Father, we thank you that you love each person here. And Father, that you are very concerned about each agenda, so we thank you. And we say, bless us, bless our words, and bless our time, in Jesus' name. Amen.[185.12][185.12](APPLAUSE).
Please follow me in our question. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Our first presentation for tonight is going to be to present the certificates of election and administer the oath of office to our newly-elected council people persons on Place Four and councilperson Place Six of the Granbury City Council. If I could have Trish Reiner and Greg Corrigan come forward, please.
I, say your name.
I, Chris Reiner.
To solve his word. That I will faithfully execute. The duties of the office. Of Councilperson.
Councilperson, five. Six.
Of the State of Texas. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve. Protect. And defend the Constitution. And laws of the United States. And of this state. So help me God.[294.14][294.14](APPLAUSE).
I like him. He's getting in a hurry. All right. At this time, we'd like to present them their certificates, and I'll start with Ms. Trish Reiner here. In the name and by the authority of the City of Granbury, Texas, this is to certify that in the general election held on November 7th, 2017, that Trish Reiner was duly elected councilperson Place Four. In testimony thereof, in my signature by the name, cause of the seal of the City of Granbury, Texas, to affix this 21st day of November, 2017, I, Nen Hewlett, Mayor of Granbury.[330.52][330.52](APPLAUSE). Greg, in the name and by the authority of the City of Granbury, Texas, this is to certify that in the general election held on November 7th, 2017, Greg Corrigan was duly elected councilperson Place Six. And in the testimony thereof, I have signed by my name and caused the seal of the City of Granbury, Texas, to affix this 21st day of November, 2017, I, Nen Hewlett, Mayor of Granbury.[360.71][360.71](APPLAUSE). Greg, in the name and by the authority of the City of Granbury, Texas, this is to certify that in the general election held on November 7th, 2017, Greg Corrigan was duly elected councilperson Place Six. And in the testimony thereof, I have signed by my name and caused the seal of the City of Granbury, Texas, to affix this 21st day of November, 2017, I, Nen Hewlett, Mayor of Granbury. Congratulations.[400.52][400.52](APPLAUSE). You may take your places at the dice. here, so welcoming when you get a chance, and I know they'll do a great job for us. Our next presentation is we're going to receive a Heart Safe Community Recognition by the Texas EMS, given by Vern Walker, I believe Vern, and he's got some people up here.
Mayor Hewlett, esteemed members of the council, we thank you for the opportunity to come today and present the Heart Safe Community Project recognition to the City of Granbury. We're quite proud of the accomplishment, and it took a lot of work, but I'm going to let Jody come up and actually speak about some of those things. But before we do that, I would like to quickly talk about three other projects that Texas EMS is actively working through, just to kind of inform the council, just so you'd know. One of the things that we're very proud, we're working with Dr. Large and Granbury ISD with a project called Project Adam. This is a nationally-recognized program that works to keep our children safe in the event that they, that someone happens to sustain a sudden cardiac arrest. That preparedness is essential for saving that person's life. And the only thing you can do is prepare, because time is absolutely of the essence. And we started with them in November, going through and working with the nursing staff and running drills. And we, basically, our role is just to go in and set it up, run the drill, and then give them critique about how they're doing. And I have been absolutely amazed at the staff and their ability of being able to respond. They're doing a fantastic job, and they deserve a bit of recognition for what they're doing, because this is essential. If, we hope that this never happens, but if it does, we know that our schools are going to be prepared. And it's a wonderful, wonderful project, and we just wanted to kind of make everybody aware that that's happening. The second thing is that Texas EMS was recognized at the Governor's EMS and Trauma Council this past weekend for being pediatric-ready. And what that means is, we were surveyed by the Emergency Medical Services for Children, which is a national organization that looks at our education, they look at our equipment, they look at our preparedness, they look at the projects that we work in with the public to improve pediatric care across the state, and specifically in our region, but they look at it from across the state, one of you. So we were one of six organizations that were recognized this weekend, and so I'm very proud of that as well. And then the last project that we're working on is with Texas Tech University. We entered into contract with them during the summer, and we'll be putting in telemedicine units into some of our ambulances. And this is being funded through Texas House Bill 479, which aims to improve the outcomes of trauma, cardiac, and stroke patients throughout rural areas. And so we're very proud to be able to partner with them. It's a unique opportunity for us, you know, being so far away from them, for one, and then, two, but being able to be brought into that fold. And so, we hope to be able to help them prove great things and be able to use that video telemedicine equipment to improve care for the citizens here in our community. And so, we definitely are proud of those things. But without further ado, I'm going to let Jody step up here and talk about why we're actually here this evening. Thank you very much.
Good evening. At the beginning of the year, Texas EMS began a journey of special recognition and achievement, and due to these efforts and with the collaboration of our partners, the City of Granbury was recognized as a heart-safe community on September 12th, 2017. Our community was evaluated in six distinct areas that a community focuses on, its efforts on to protect the citizens from heart disease and sudden cardiac arrest. These six areas are access to emergency care, emergency medical dispatch, automatic external defibrillators within the community, provision of pre-hospital advanced life support, community awareness, education, and activities designed for the reduction of cardiac events, data collection and review of heart-healthy restaurant menus, walking and jogging paths, workout centers, and et cetera. North Central Texas Trauma Regional Advisory Council's Heart Safe Community Program is designed to recognize the efforts a community makes to its citizens in protecting them from the effects of heart disease and sudden death. This recognition required a multidisciplinary team approach to review and complete the components of the heart-safe community. Texas EMS would like to recognize the following entities: Mayor Hewlett and the esteemed members of the Granbury City Council, Granbury Police Department, Granbury Volunteer Fire Department, Hood County Sheriff's Department, Hood County Dispatch, Lake Granbury Medical Center's Administration, the Cardiac Cath Lab, and the emergency departments in Granbury. Thank you.[809.63][809.63](APPLAUSE).
If you could, we would like one or two of you to come take a couple of pictures with us, with our signs. Actually, your signs. We're going to give these to you, and then we've kept forward.[825.35][825.35](APPLAUSE).
The consent agenda is, number one, is to consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of November 7th, 2017. The second one being consider approving a disposal and surplus Neptune water meters and Itron encoder receiver transmitters, ERT. Council, you had an opportunity to look over these consent agenda items. I will say that that number two item, we'll probably put that out for an auction or bid, and hopefully we'll have a community that could use those old parts that, well, actually are new parts that we haven't used now because we've got the new system now. So hopefully, we can find somebody that will take them off our hands. Is there any changes or amendments to the consent agenda, council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Councilman Couch. Have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Corrigan, Councilman Corrigan, okay. Didn't recognize the voice yet.
He won't get your name right for months.[944.00][944.00](LAUGHTER).
Thank you.
I never have.[947.00][947.00](LAUGHTER).
Are there any more discussion, council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved.
Approved.
Thank you.[962.63][962.63](APPLAUSE). At this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Kennedy Gibson with a certificate. The Certificate Appreciation Award goes to Kennedy Gibson. I, Nen Hewlett, Mayor of the City of Granbury, Texas, deem it an honor to present you with this certificate of appreciation in token of your participation and interest in the proceedings of our City Council meeting on November the 21st, 2017. Signed by myself. We also have a little pin for you. This is for you, with the certificate. Go ahead and stand up here, and we'll get a photograph. We're all about photographs up here.[1005.81][1005.81](LAUGHTER). Thank you very much for helping us out today.[1015.43][1015.43](APPLAUSE). Kennedy's kind of the pilot program for this. We're going to try to do this on occasions. Hopefully, we can do it once a month, and I have chosen Oakwood School is going to try to help me with recognizing some students to come out here and to help us out at a council meeting, maybe once a month. So we look forward to that, and as you can see, it looks like a future councilman right there, so I'm glad to have him help us out. Next, we're going to move into deliberation agenda. Make sure Mr. Mobley didn't go all the way home.[1060.65][1060.65](LAUGHTER). The first item on the deliberation agenda is to consider an action of a potential city development operation for the Granbury ISD-owned property at 210 North Jones Street. And I'm going to call upon our city manager, Chris Kaufman. I think he's got some speakers also. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, council. At this time, I would like to have Assistant City Manager Michael Ross introduce our architect.
Thank you, Mayor, council. About three, four months ago, City Council had a joint meeting with the Granbury School District Board of Trustees, and from that meeting asked staff to request a proposal from an architect. We did so from PGAL, and they have prepared some conceptual drawings to share with council this evening of ideas of what could happen to the property, were the city interested in doing some sort of exchange with them. And with that, I'll introduce Jeff Gerber, who is the CEO of PGAL, to go over those details, and will be available for any questions after that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, as Michael said, I've got a presentation to share with you, and really, the purpose of this was to help provide information about what might be possible if the city was to take possession of a portion of this project, what the improvements could be, sort of define a range of what that could look like, and then to provide you with some budget numbers about what you would have to do just to make the building functional, and then to give you some idea about what some improvement costs might be in a pretty broad range to give you an idea about what the future investment might be should you decide to do any of those improvements. So this slide, first slide, is really to show you the existing conditions and about what we're talking about. And I should say that we built upon the presentation, and I think that you saw from the ISD. They had prepared some presentations showing you what they were proposing about which pieces of the property that the city might take on, and others might as well. So everything I'm going to show you sort of mirrors that information. So this exhibit shows the area of the site that was being proposed, that the city would take possession of, and I'm getting used to your technology here. So this zone up here, which includes the field and the Decker gym, which is down here, is the part of the property that was being proposed that the city might take on, and the rest of that site would be taken on by others. Obviously, there's an existing annex building that's in the foreground, and our understanding is that that building would be demolished by the school district as part of the project. So these slides, basically, just to give you an idea about what's over there, I'm sure you're well aware, this is the gym structure itself. This shows you the backside of the annex, the annex piece that would be demolished, which is over here, and then the part that would be salvaged, which is to the left of that. This is the classroom portion of the building that would be salvaged. This is a panoramic of the condition of the gym itself on the inside, the stage, which is on one end of it, and an idea of, this is a corridor that connects the classroom portion and the gym, and then down towards the other classroom section at the very end. There are some classroom spaces in there that are, you know, fairly functional, just to give you an idea about what states of the improvements are, and obviously, the site condition of the field. So to start out with, I made several assumptions that, again, mirrors the presentation that was presented with, by the school district, but also to let you know what I assumed, so it's clear about what, because these assumptions may vary, which might change some of the information I'm sharing with you. So the existing annex building would be demolished by others, as I mentioned, and that there is some asbestos in that building, and that would be abated as part of that demolition. That all the improvements that we're talking about would be within that boundary of site that I showed you as the proposed city boundaries, that there is some proposed parking that would be off-site, that would be provided by others, that would be to the south of that site, that any improvements to the other buildings remaining on that site would be provided by others and would not be involved with this, by the city, that their existing drive that circles the field would not be a dedicated street, it would remain to be an internal drive, and that any site improvements are limited to the area defined that I defined. And then there is asbestos in the portion of the building that would remain, that is some of it's partially encapsulated and some not, that some of that would need to be dealt with as part of any renovation project. Anytime you're looking at a renovation of a building, there's lots of considerations that have to come into play that I think are worth just identifying. First of all, that any renovation project would be required to bring the building into compliance, full compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and would also have to come into compliance with the newly-adopted state energy code to be able to have the systems and the building envelope that would meet that standard. The environmental cleanup is related to the asbestos to make sure that the building is safe to occupy, that the building, because we're removing a section of the building, that we would need to make sure the building is weather-protected, that the building would not take on water and would have a permanent seal, that any functional improvements to the building, which I'll talk about later, would be part of that, that the building would need to be secured, that it would be locked off and not be accessible to the public. Obviously, you have to understand how parking would happen for anyone using that site. And then in terms of building improvements, dealing with the building envelope, which is the exterior skin of the building, the roof and the walls, the finishes inside the building, any equipment that's in there, and then building systems, mechanical equipment, lighting, all of those types of systems. So all of those are things that anytime you're talking about renovating any building, those are the things that you need to think about, and I'm going to be presenting to you here in a second. So to try to identify this in components that would give you a sort of the biggest range to think about, I started with a scenario that said, what if you just took occupancy of the building and you didn't intend to do any improvements, that you would just take the building and the site and do the minimal amount that you need to just to bake the building secure and watertight, and then anything else would happen in the future? And so I'm calling that the minimal occupancy option, and that's basically if you took possession of the site, what are the things that you'd have to do even if you weren't doing anything to improve the functionality or renovate the building? And I'm calling that the minimal occupancy option. So as I mentioned, the existing building would be demolished, which is in this area, so there would be a big demolished zone as well as, you know, parking that would be around it. So we clearly need to address what's going to go in its place. And so just for this minimal occupancy option, I just assume it would just be planted lawn. It would just be created as an open field, no improvements other than just to make it a place where it's not a mud hole, and it could be used for any kind of outdoor activity. And then you see from this diagram, over here, this is what would be left of the building. So you have the gym itself, you have the stage, you have the classroom spaces that are here, and then the other educational spaces that currently exist on at this end. All of that would remain, and again, this is what was part of the ISD presentation that you had seen before. So under the minimal occupancy option, the things that I'm assuming that we're doing is that we would consider this to be a maintenance project, not a renovation. And that's an important distinction, because under that scenario, you would not be required to be building up the current code, you wouldn't be required to improve it for ADA, that you're basically just like you would be doing maintenance on a building, and the building and site otherwise would be in an as-is condition, as I showed you. So the improvements to the building would be limited to just making it watertight and making sure that the doors are lockable and the building is secure. And then any site improvements, as I said, would be just dealing with creating an open lawn where the annex building is, that any sidewalks that got tore up in the demolition would be repaired, so it would be safe for people to walk around the site, but the field would stay as it is, and any asbestos in the building would stay in its current condition. So, and then I have a budget line here at the bottom, and I want to just talk about how I arrive at budgets, so you sort of understand what is included here. So when I prepare budgets for cities, I try to give you a holistic number that includes the complete components. It includes any construction, it includes some contingency money, it includes any soft costs that you might have in terms of paying for engineering studies or anything like that, and that, and so it is a fully-loaded number. It's not just what a construction cost would be. And I've also assumed that any work would be hired out and not be done by your local, your staff member. So these numbers are on the high end of what you might have for any scenario, and I just want to articulate that. So I'm trying to give you a complete conservative number, that certainly there's room to improve these, even in this as-built condition. So the budget range that I've identified for this scenario, again, is a fully-loaded number, is between $70,000 and $130,000 to do the minimal occupancy option. So the next scenario is just dealing with the building itself, and so I'm going to show you two different site development strategies. One is treating it like a park environment, and one is treating it like a public space scenario, and I've treated those separately, and I'll show you those in a second. So right now, I'm just talking about renovation of the building, the building itself. And so, as I said before, that building would be the building components here, which include the gym, the stage, the existing classrooms. the building components here, which include the gym, the stage, the existing classrooms, and this educational space, that's offices and other spaces down at this end. So I have looked at this from a minimal renovation scenario and a more extensive one. And certainly, when you look at those components, there's ranges on both sides of those. You can do less, and you can do a lot more. But I was trying to look at, what are the things that you would probably want to do, and even in a minimal renovation, to make the building stable, that it doesn't become an, an ongoing maintenance problem, that you're having to go in and put more money in every year to redo things, to, if the roof is leaking, for example, replace the roof in a minimal one, so you're not continually going up and patching the roof as a, as an idea about that. So, under this minimal renovation strategy, I'm assuming that we're putting in new finishes, which is flooring and ceiling, painting the walls where it needs to be, that I've assumed that we're putting a new roof on the building, that we're putting in new windows, because we're required to, by the energy code, and then we're in compliance with the energy code, which means that we have to put more insulation in the building, walls and ceiling, that what's there now, and that we need to upgrade a lot of the equipment to make it more energy efficient, which is what is required by the new state energy code, that we are making the building ADA compliant, and that we're upgrading the lighting, so that we have a much more energy efficient lighting system. That's what I'm assuming in this minimal renovation category. In the extensive renovation, in addition to those things, I've assumed that we're putting an air conditioning system in the gym. Right now, it's not, it's a, a ventilated space. Again, you may not want to do that, but I'm just to give you an idea about what would it be if you added air conditioning in that building. It improves the stage, so that you can use it as a stage with lighting and, and be able to use it for other productions if you want to. So I've included some money to do that, put a sprinkler system in the building, which is, which is something that the, the farm marshal may require to happen in either event, but I think it would be recommended in a, in a building to protect it, as well as to do restroom improvements. So I've got those kinds of things in an ex, more extensive renovation budget that are not included in the minimal renovation budget. So in the renovation of the gym and classroom, I'm assuming that we're making it fully ADA compliant, and that includes the building, and then we'll have to do that for the site as well. And then, as I mentioned in the previous slide, that we're making the building watertight, secure, upgrading the MEP systems, mechanical electric and plumbing systems, the finishes, and the exterior skin, and we're dealing with the asbestos removal. And that I've identified a range, again, this is just for the building, that that construction cost for that is somewhere between 1.6 million and 2.58 million. Okay? And then, again, as I said before, you can do less, and you certainly can do more, but just to give you sort of a range about what might be if you're trying to improve the building, to give it some life, extended life, and to be able to use it on a regular basis, in an improved condition. So as I mentioned, the site, I've, I've looked at that as two different strategies. One is treat it like a park site, and the other is to treat it as a public space site. And so I'm going to first talk about the park site options, and what, and I've created some graphics just to sort of articulate what that might look like, just as to give you an idea about what that kind of would include. So in the, in the park use, there's things like trails, it would have passive space, like playground equipment, just place for kids to go on, you know, play catch and things like that, active spaces for the, you know, the field, landscaping, hardscaping, which is sidewalks, sight lighting, and then other play areas, is kind of what a park environment might look like. And then in a public space, you would have structures like pavilions and other spaces to be able to handle events and other types of larger public gathering spaces. So that's how I'm defining those two different strategies. And here's what they look like. I've done three different park strategies and three different public space strategies. So this is option one of the park site, and this one is very, very similar to the option that the ISD showed you, just to show you. So we put a number on, on that strategy, we, we changed it a little bit, but in, in essence, this is similar, very similar to that scenario, which is basically creating some outdoor pathways and just get seating areas, just really trying to break down that, that big lawn area into smaller type park spaces. This is another idea for the same thing, just taking a little different giant geometry for that space that focuses the, the structured space more in the middle and leaves some of the perimeter space to more open, open spaces. And then the third idea, which is, in this one, we introduced some, a water, some water into the, that space, and again, more of a outdoor lawn kind of zone. And again, we're just trying to give you an idea about different kinds of strategies and what kind of allowances for those kind of improvements you might anticipate for these. So under the park site option, the assumptions for the budget are, again, that the site has to be fully ADA compliant, that it includes the trails, landscaping, hardscape, lighting, play areas, and in the one scenario, the water features. And then in the, in the field, that we're doing some reconfiguration, and we're doing some lighting improvements, just to, to clean that space up, and I've identified a budget for the park option, which again is just the site, of 571,000 to 1.0, just under 1.5 million. Again, big range, but there's a lot of different assumptions there. So the public space options, again, which is taking, and in addition to the trails, having more public, where you could have a festival there, or have other kinds of more structured activities than you would have in a, in a park kind of space. Here's some, some graphics that shows you three different ideas for that. This one has more of a pavement section, has a pavilion building that's located here to, to allow you both to have, you know, concerts or other types of events that could be used on that site, that would, that the structure would be in place for you to be able to do that. This is another idea of the same thing, just looking at it in a different way. This has a lot more site paving, has the pavilion building located down at this end, and, but still continues to have some grass spaces over in here. And then a third idea, which breaks the site into smaller zones, has some outdoor amphitheaters, has some water features, and then has some smaller venues that could be used for different things, as well as some pavilion space. Again, these are just trying to give you an idea of a range of kinds of things that could happen under that kind of a strategy. So the assumptions for a public space option, it would be that we would be fully ADA compliant, that would have all of those features, or could have all those features, that I showed you in those three ideas, that, again, the, the Decker field, we'd, we'd look at cleaning that up over there, and the budget range for this could be somewhere between 780,000 and 2.3 million, depending on how many structures you want to put out there, and sound systems and that kind of stuff. So just to summarize, to make sure you've kind of followed where, how I was presenting this. So, under the first scenario, that the city just takes occupancy of the property and says, what do we have to do just to take occupancy and make sure it's secure and safe to be able to continue to use it as is being used today? No improvements to the building is that first line, 70,000 to 130,000. The second line is for the building only, what would be arranged to bring the building, to make it fully compliant with codes, meeting all of those areas, and, and on the high range, to start to improve some of the functionality, increasing the air conditioning to that building. And then the last two are either-or. So it's either the park or the public space, or you could just leave it as open lawn and not have either one of those. So just to give you a sense about those ranges. So that is the presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Counsel, if you have any questions, sir?
Mayor.
Counsel, and, uh, couch.
Uh, Jeff, when you approached the different options, did you have any input from people regarding the demand of one option versus another option?
Uh, well, a couple of different things. So I had some discussions with staff, with, with, with Michael and Chris about that. I also had the benefit of the research that was done in the ISD studies, which they talked about what some of the, the community interests were, or spaces, so taking, taking that information, and then had a brief conversation with some others, just to sort of get a gauge. So I would say, is it fully vetted out? Probably would want to do more vetting with your, for, you know, having a public workshop or something like that, to be able to get real reaction to ideas.
But was there, was there a leaning to, to one versus the other?
I, I don't think so. I think that what I was trying to do was just to give you an idea about what could be there.
Okay.
I had a conversation with some of the council members at, at TML, and the discussion was, in that, some of the thought was that maybe the public space wasn't, if you're going to do public space, it would be better to be downtown and be able to take advantage of other, other things that are downtown than maybe at that site. But that's really the, the input that I had gotten from that.
Um, so if, if we looked at the very low, we're talking 70 to 130, and as high as if we did the building renovation and the public space, somewhere in the $5 million range?
And again, you can do a lot less, if you, because what I did, just to give you an idea, and I know you can't read this, but I wanted to give you some confidence that I just didn't make the numbers up. So, um, this is a spreadsheet that shows all of my detailed assumptions about every system I was improving, and how much I was allocating for each of those different scenarios. So went in and said, hey, I'm going to replace the finishes in this room, I'm going to replace the ceiling in this room. And, and so you had a real sense that there's, um, uh, reality to what those are. Now, the city may say, look, the gym's fine the way it is, let's just paint the walls and, and it works great, let's leave it alone. That would be substantially less expensive than the assumptions I made, even in the minimal range. The things you're going to have to do if you do a renovation, is you're going to have to make it ADA compliant, which means bathrooms will be renovated, you know, they have ramps and doors, all of those types of things will have to be done. And you're going to have to meet the state energy code, which in existing buildings, quite honestly, is challenging, because it's, the new energy code was intended to push construction forward and be, use a lot less energy, and a lot of the older buildings struggle to get there. So it requires a lot, it requires putting in much more efficient mechanical systems, much more efficient lighting, and then increasing the insulation value on the walls and the roof and windows, to really to achieve that in a renovation building, of a, of a renovation.
Okay. One more question. Was there any discussion where this potentially could be an anchor for that, where Morgan meets Pearl, and have a connection in the future between that intersection all the way down to downtown, to where retail could be robust? Any, any discussion how that might be an option?
Not, not necessarily, but I think that the kinds of spaces that would probably create an anchor like that would be more of the public spaces. I mean, and I, maybe not the ideas I showed you, but something that would anchor and be an end to that kind of a development, so, so visitors have a reason to transverse through your community, to either, to, to take, partake in the restaurants or other activities and give them things to do along the way, so they, you know, aren't necessarily having to drive, they could walk and enjoy the community. But, but I would guess what you're describing would be more like the, the public place kind of spaces than maybe the park spaces.
And are you aware of any type of grant funding that might be available for something like this?
There is, there are grants available. We have worked with a number of cities for various, using various improvement funds, just some ones that we've done recently, the city of Navasota, we helped them redo their downtown, their city hall, and the plaza space around that. They utilize textot grants for a lot of the site improvements around the building there. We've also, one of the images I had, I think, in there was for an outdoor pavilion that, that the city of Plano got some grant funds for as well. So there is some of that out there. I, I can't sit here and tell you what specific ones might apply to you, I haven't really studied that at this point.
Well, thank you.
I've got a question for the city, uh, city manager, and maybe you too, Jeff, but once we determine that, say we would want to go ahead and go forward with some parks property, is there a timeline, if we say this is parks property, then that's, it is then parks property, and there's no way to go back and say, well, we changed our mind?
That's true. Once you call it parks property, it becomes a park.
Okay.
And it takes an election by the voters to change that status. So, you know, if you're thinking about multiple use for that facility, maybe you want to lease that, that school to another school or something, private school, I think there's some interest out there for that. That would be something to consider. But I think overall, the green space is going to be required to be remaining a park, based on the school's long-range plan and their commitment to giving us that property with those conditions.
Okay. So when you talk about grants, there's probably different grants, there's grants associated with parks?
Yes.
And some associated with, okay, right.
There are.
Okay.
I got a question.
Counsel Manal.
Thank you, Mayor. Is that an 80-20 grant, or what are they?
I'm sorry?
Is that 80-20 grants, or what are they?
Um, well, the one specific one in Navasota that I'm most familiar with, that was a textot grant under their transportation program. And it was really, sort of what you described is, it was how do we keep the, the, the visitors in an area and reduce traffic and help improve the, the draw of their community, was their application strategy, and they were, I can't remember exactly the amount of money they got for that, or which program it was, but I certainly can track that down.
I can answer.
Okay. Go ahead, Chris.
I can, I can answer.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
The parks program, Texas Park Wildlife has a half million dollar grant that's used for outdoors. So you could, you could parse this project into different things, and, and they require a local match of the same amount. In this situation, you could leverage the land donation as your local match, and then apply for a full half million dollars, and sometimes they have available funding up to 750,000.
So we might be short about 4 million.
Well, for that, if you do all of, but what I'm saying is, you break it up in, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time, you know, so you don't have to take it on all at once.
All right. My next question is, you were talking about, about sprinkler systems in the new building, this is on the cheap way versus the good way, the one that's, I don't even see a price on this one, I think it's 1.6 million to 2.58.
Correct.
And if you remodeled the old one, the cheap way, I thought there was rules, and again, I go back to the city, about, um, above ground, above sprinkler systems on a building of a certain size.
There, there are.
So we'd have to do that anyway.
And he alluded to that we might have to, based on our local rules, but yes, anything over 7,000 feet under one roof requires sprinkler system. So those classrooms may or may not require it, but I bet the gym would.
I was one of the person that you met with at TML.
Yes.
The other gentleman's not here.
I remember, yes.
But anyway, and I can see this a lot better than I can on the phone, but, uh, thank you for sharing it with us.
That was an impromptu meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was. And, uh, appreciate you showing it to me, but, uh, that's all I want to say, a lot of money.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So, thanks for all the work you've done. I don't think we're voting on which plan to take. I think we're just voting on whether it would be an asset to the city. I think it will be. It's hard to put a price on parks. It's a quality of life thing. It's not a profit center. It's a lot like many things in the city that don't necessarily turn a profit, but make life better and bring people to town. So, I don't know that we need to look at five or six or seven million dollars at this point. It's just, will it benefit the city? Isn't that where we're headed?
Yep.
Absolutely. And I think my charge was to help give you an idea about what it might be if you wanted to make some improvements to it, for sure.
And I guess I have a question for Aaron because he's been, basically, you guys are going to be cutting the grass and sweeping the sidewalks. What's it going to do to your budget?
That's my question.
Because it's, why don't you run this meeting?
City manager.
I'll just tell you. I'll take that question. It would increase.
Sorry, Aaron. See, you made that.
It would increase the need for maintenance funds and operation maintenance. And based on what you do, we would need to analyze that and add additional staffing and equipment to take care of that.
Yeah, because that's an ongoing cost that I think is going to.
It'd be maintenance and operation, that's for sure.
It's going to make these costs look smaller with the period of time.
You know, one thing you pointed out there, it's probably, it'll bring people in. I believe if there's option B on a public space, where you would have it out there, if we had a stage and everything, might be the one before that. If this had a stage, would you have outdoor?
They're all.
Yeah, they both, they all, that's, I've assumed that all these, of those park spaces were stages.
Okay. What's the biggest or amount of people you estimate that would have? Do you have any idea?
Well, in the lawn, you could, you know, it's a pretty big space. It's twenty, fifteen, twenty thousand square feet, so you could put a lot of people there.
Five thousand, easy.
Yeah, I mean, if it's sitting in lawn chairs, maybe not as many. But for sure, you know, for popular festivals, it could serve a lot.
Yeah. Could I answer you?
Along with that, Councilman, the, if you remember that event that we had at the Shanley Park where we had, right before the election last November, we had the community come together and pray.
Fair amount.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There was a group that put that on. A couple of churches did all that. We will never be able to do that again at that park because the folks that manage that park were upset about that program. So, we don't really have a venue to do something of large scale like that other than the Hewlett Park. And you saw how that fits too.
Yes. But I do know we had a workshop about a year ago, I think. There was some ideas and the mayor had brought it up about this. Is that correct, Mayor?
Right.
On the water or something. And I just think, you know, not saying it would work there, but I think that'd be something great for our city. That would bring people in. I do.
Well, it also, you know, like Chris said, it also brings in more meeting places, more places to have events and stuff other than our conference center that we have presently, you know, and stuff. And Counsel, we, I mean, we can, we're going to be discussing this. We could actually go back and we've got the, on the executive session, we're going to be talking about real property if we want to talk about that a little bit in more length back there, then we could bring it back out and observe action to be taken. We could do that then also. So, we can, this is a discussion item, but we do need to come forward and do something for soon.
What kind of timeline are we looking at? I know that the school district's probably pretty ready to move forward with the demolition of the building. When do we need to make a decision whether we want to move forward or pass on the property?
Is there a timeline, Chris?
You know, we asked the superintendent that and, you know, they would like to get some resolution to it soon. So, you know, probably in the next three or four months. We need to have our mind made up one way or another. And if we're not going to do it, we need to let them know sooner than later. And so, this is some talks y'all need to have.
And that's why we're here today. I mean, I know some of the new council members haven't been involved in some of the discussion we've had, but we have had discussion and we've talked about it. And I think it's now the time that we, that we make a commitment one way or the other so that the school can go forward also.
So, really, we charged our architect to put this together, to give y'all some ideas and some concepts of what could be done. It could be completely different than this. This is his creativity, showing some numbers about what he thinks it would cost to do these different kind of ideas. So, at the end of the day, he's done his job, basically. We may have him come back and have a public meeting or something public and review all this with the public if y'all so desire. But basically, he's done what we asked him to do and he's off, he's fulfilled his agreement. So, we appreciate what you've done for us. And obviously, the idea was to give us opportunity to digest what was being offered for free from the school. However, there's an extensive capital cost to accept that gift. So, this council will need to work through that and determine what they want to do.
So, council, any more questions for the gentleman, sir? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Well, at this time, Counsel, we'll just, we'll leave it at a discussion item at this point. And like I said, if we discuss it further and want to take action, we can take some action even after some more discussion with it. The next item is to consider selecting a mayor pro temp from among the city council members. As you know, at the end, the first meeting of every council meeting after an election, you select, we select a new mayor pro temp. The mayor pro temp does not have to be necessarily the seniority person. It's whatever the council chooses to select. So, at this point, I'll open up the discussion for the nominations for a mayor pro temp. I would entertain the motion for Councilman Mobley to be the mayor pro temp. I need a motion for somebody. Does anybody want to be the mayor pro temp?
It pays a lot of money, Mayor.
I hear a so moved.
Yes.
We got a so moved. We got a motion on the floor by Councilman Corrigan. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilperson Reiner. So, we have a motion and a second for Councilman Mobley. Is there any more discussion on that item? If not, Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Absolutely.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Why not?
Why not? Councilperson Reiner?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley is our new mayor pro temp. As you know, we'll be filling in in the absence of the mayor.
Don't you leave.
I've got plans. Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Mobley, I think you'll do a good job for us. The next item is to determine and consider adopting the city councilman, the city council rules and procedures. Here again, this is a item that at the first meeting, that we go over the rules and procedures and adopt as is or with the changes. And as you see, Counsel, there has been some highlighted changes that have been recommendations on the rules and procedures. So, you've had an opportunity to look at those. Those are in red. And some of the red numbers is just changing the amount of items that are on there. I think our attorney has went through that. I think Chris has looked at it too a little bit. But Counsel, these are your decisions to look at these things. None of them override the charter, so you look at those and if you've got changes you want to make or if you want to accept the changes that have been presented to you or delete some of those changes, that is up to you at this time. So, Counsel, I'm going to open the floor up for any discussion on that. Counsel, no discussion? Well, if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to accept the changes that have been made to our rules and procedures as presented.
So, we're in adopted.
Pardon? In adopted, okay. So, I've got a motion by Councilman Mobley. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Couch. So, these will be the rules and procedures that we will be adopting tonight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those changes in the rules and procedures have been adopted. Our next item is to consider approving additional seating to the Granbury Town Square Improvement Project by adding six-foot-long powder-coated steel back benches in the amount of seven hundred and forty-nine dollars each without the armrests. And I'm going to just, without reading all the way through this, I'm going to turn this over to Chris and I think he's got some staff people to talk about this a little bit. Chris?
You bet. Well, on this item, I think we can pretty well handle it. It's pretty simple. There's a picture of a bench that's been proposed that would allow people to sit on it either direction and look at either the courthouse or the sidewalk. And the six benches that we just purchased have backs on them and so they're not as versatile, but they do provide that service as well. But at this time, we don't have a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission on how many they need, but we would ask that y'all budget eight thousand dollars towards these benches and we anticipate buying eight of them. And the flat bench with the arms as pictured are eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars each. They're powder-coated material, last a long time, won't have any trouble with them. And they're, you know, just like any other public piece of furniture, you know, they've got all the things that you can hang your clothes on or whatever removed so there's, minimizes any kind of injury or scratching of citizens and that kind of thing. So, they're designed for public use in park areas and spaces. So, anyway, that's kind of what we got. We'll be happy to answer some questions if you have any, but it's pretty easy. We just think we need more benches than the six that we have. Ultimately, we're thinking that the recommendation's going to be that the only benches on the square are the public benches to add some uniformity and to allow the walking paths to be freer than having seating everywhere the way it is now. But we don't know that yet, so we're still working with the historic group to do that.
Great, Mayor.
Councilman Couch?
Well, are we, are we voting on the eight thousand dollars for eight benches? Are we voting on specific, that specific bench?
Well, we would, we, staff feels like that's the bench that would be versatile enough. If you want to go to the bench that's pictured at the bottom, they're about a thousand dollars. And that's the existing bench that we do have.
Okay. Can we, if we're going to approve this, can we leave that open so that if it's historical or if there's a decision made that, well, maybe we could use four of each that were not locked into the one without the back?
Stat's recommendation was to appropriate eight thousand dollars towards the benches. Simple as that.
All right.
But I wanted to kind of show you the direction we're headed.
Okay.
And I agree with you. The Historical Preservation Commission needs to give us a little more direction.
So, you're saying they haven't bought off on both of these benches yet?
They haven't even talked about them.
Oh, oh, oh.
Other than on the sidewalk in a tour.
We may not get them then.
Where's Julie Prunell? We'll get her to sell them.
You know, that's another question. We might be able to reach out to some of these nonprofits, in particular, the Beautification Council. They may be willing to participate in buying some of these benches or all of them. And we don't know. I mean, they do have a fundraiser every year to buy things to beautify the city and they've been known to do things on the square. So, this might be a good project for them to be able to do that. But regardless, we need to get some direction from y'all and move forward.
Mayor, can I say something?
Councilman Allen, sure you can.
Thank you, sir. I walked down there the other day or hobbled and several places have tables out there now. You can hardly get by for three people beside you. That's not what the taxpayers, I think, and we voted to spend two million dollars for it as far as outdoors.
Well, Councilman Allen, we're going to go ahead and stay on the bench item right now. We're talking about purchasing benches. I know, I know what you're talking about.
I apologize, Mayor, but I'm just thinking that when you can't make a corner because you're hitting a table or hitting a sign, we don't need no more down there. They want them, let them buy them.
So, that's your take on the benches?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, they are public sidewalks. In the past, they were treated as private sidewalks and that's why you have the privately owned stuff out there. And so, there's a, there's a big shift coming in how this is going to roll out in the future. The Historic Commission met and developed some guidelines and it'll be on your next agenda if y'all talk about that very thing.
All right. Let's stay on the purchasing. We're trying to allocate some money to purchase some additional benches.
Well, I'll go ahead and make that.
Whether they have the backs, the backs or just no backs at all.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
The only feedback I've got on it, the only complaint about the existing benches I've heard is the fact that some folks say they face the wrong way, that they face the buildings instead of the courthouse. I would like to, perhaps, have some input as far as which benches are chosen because if that's the complaint, then we can take care of that with a much less expensive bench and effectively get nine benches for the price of the eight of the more expensive ones. And if we're buying eight and we have six, we have three or four on each side or on each street, I think this would be a more effective use of our dollars.
I've tried both of them out and I personally like the ones with no bench, no back on them at all because some of the backs come with that divider in the middle also and that takes away some. But then the bench that you just sit down on, you can put your foot up on them and tie your shoe, whatever you want to do. I mean, and you're right, you can turn them around either direction. So, and less expensive.
The middle armrest is designed to keep people from sleeping on them.
Sleeping.
Like I say, they're used nationwide in parks. But hey, we can, we can, we can, I'm just trying to get some money appropriated towards the project.
Counsel, any more discussion on appropriating money for additional benches for our downtown skate? Have we got a motion? But got a motion from Councilman Couch. Motion is to go forward with, assuming, yeah. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. So, I have a first and a second. Is there any more discussion on the appropriation of money for the benches?
Mayor, what is the motion to buy? What for? Which one?
We don't know yet. We're just appropriating some money.
Okay, and it'll be brought back to us?
If you want it to be, I'll bring it back.
Well, I mean, I think it's just what.
But we're going to approve the money, so you're going to have to spend the money on something if it gets approved.
Well, we don't have to.
Park.
I can get some donations, boss.
Okay.
You're right, Tony. Where'd this guy come from?
Okay, here we go. Well, I agree with Councilman Mobley. You know, if people are complaining about the back, get the flat one. Yeah, I'd like to hear the opinion before we go buy eight thousand dollars worth of ones with back on them and everybody's saying, no, that's not what I want.
We would do that for you, Mr. Allen.
Original, original thought as put on the agenda is to buy the benches without the backs.
Okay.
At eight twenty-nine, you will tap a motion?
No, then we need to be blessed by the council, I mean, by the historical side. So, let's just appropriate some money and we can bring that back to you, Mr. Allen.
Okay.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The city manager to appropriate some money and go forward with getting some benches. Our next item, lost my place here, is to consider approving the town square lighting change out of the approved change order number three for the Fane Group Incorporated for the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I'm going to turn this over to Chris Kaufman once again to give us some background on that, please.
Put together a scenario to change out the lighting on the square. The lights that were ordered were the ones that matched the existing. They are metal halide, two hundred and fifty watt. And as you can see, they are a true blue white, clear white. And they are causing problems with the B and Bs upstairs and the restaurant that has upstairs. And so, we felt, fielded some complaints and have been working on trying to resolve this issue. To get to this point was quite a trick going through the vendor and, but we finally got there. Truly, we've been working on this about sixty days. And so, there's some shades that are made or deflectors that are made by this company that we can put behind the light bulb that deflects the direct light off of the building where those, where those interests are. And I believe we're going to need to do those deflectors regardless of what light fixtures there. If you went to the police or the law enforcement memorial lately and you've seen the lighting at that facility, that is what's being proposed in this motion as compared to the white lights. It's at the firefighter's memorial. You can see a stark difference when you go to that facility as they're side by side. There's some photos in your council packet that illustrate that as well. So, in closing with that description, what we're proposing to do is So in closing, with that description, what we're proposing to do is hire the electric contractor to come back, that put in our lights, and change out those metal halide ballast and bulbs with a sodium, a pressure sodium lamp retrofit kit at the tune of $18,925. Now, the metal halide lights that are in those fixtures now will be able to be reused in the future on our parks and other places that we have those exact same light fixtures. In fact, in this parking lot, there's one of those sodium pressure lights amid the whole parking lot of the high-pressure, or the metal halide. So people like me see the difference. Y'all probably never have noticed that, so. But anyway, we try to be consistent, and we're not gonna do away with what we take out of those light fixtures if you move forward with this agenda item. So be happy to answer any questions you may have. And then Rick is also here, if we need to call him as well.
What's the cost of the deflectors?
We do not know yet.
So you haven't installed any of them yet?
No, we can't even get our hands on them yet.
Oh, there is such a?
They do make them.
Okay.
And, you know, we had this issue, when I first came, there was a, one of these lights are in the alley, and it's right at the window of the Bed and Breakfast, right here across from City Hall. And the person that runs that B&amp;B asked me if we could do something about it. And so under those, in those days, I asked the Public Works Director to get one of those deflectors, and we never got the deflector. They actually just painted the globe, and you've got a hole about this big that the light's shining out that illuminates really well. So it solved the B&amp;B breakfast, but it really cut down on the amount of light that we're producing for the pedestrians in that alley. So I think we'd need to go with the internal light diffuser and put that on in those areas where we did, we've ever seen complaints, and we know there's Bed and Breakfast right there and the light. Kinda reminds me of a Seinfeld episode where Cosmo Kramer was dealing with the Kenny Rogers Chicken Light outside. Y'all remember that episode? Anyway, so that's kinda what we got. But this is an attempt to change the ambiance of the downtown square to maybe a warmer atmosphere than the bright white light.
And these are just the lamps around the square?
I did get a couple of letters, emails, and I think y'all received one of them. But, you know, Scott Young has sent a letter in recognition of this need, and so has Diane Hedges, and they're in support of this change if the council's willing to do it. Obviously, staff will do whatever y'all want us to do. That's about all I got. I'm here to serve.
Thank you, Chris. So here, we're looking at a cost of $18,000, $19,000 a sec, $20,000 a sec.
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
So the ones that would be taken out would be repurposed in other light posts?
Right, right.
The only comment I have is that there was a member or two of the Historic Commission that felt that the amber, the softer light was more fitting to the historical theme of our downtown.
Well, and a good point to that is the gas lamps on the Opera House are hard to be seen with the bright white lights, with the amber. It might be a little more evident.
These are ones we just got put on?
And the strings. And the strings are?
Yes.
You know?
Councilman Allen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we just got them installed six months ago, three months ago?
We installed 17 new ones and 16 old ones.
Was it our decision to install what we had back up, or who told them to do that?
The architects or the engineers spec'd what we had, are existing, to buy the new ones to be the same as what we had.
But the new ones match our old ones.
Right.
Yes, and I understand we can reuse them. But the problem is, if we got a complaint before with it being too bright, why wouldn't we speak up our staff and say, "Wait a minute, I'm not mocking our staff or anything, I'm just asking questions?"
We did not have this many lights on the square. Okay, let me, this project was a pedestrian enhancement, safety enhancement project.
Yes, sir.
So we more than doubled the amount of lights, light fixtures on the square. We had 16, now we've got 33. And so there's a lot more light coming out of those 250 watt halide lights.
It's already over with, but, you know, it just seems like we just keep spending money, money, money on a, on a square.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
So it appears we got, I mean, all the two names I've heard are a couple of folks that really pushed this project. We had drawings for months to anticipate what this was gonna be. We had folks walk the square, all of us walk the square with the drawings. We, the folks that were leading this project still didn't pick up on some of this. Now, we're spending another $20,000 to change light bulbs, because it voids the warranty if anybody else changes those light bulbs. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So therefore, they don't have to, we don't have to go out for bid, they don't have to worry about cutting their cost to get the bid, because they already have it. And yes, we can reuse these bulbs at some point. If we had our city staff change those bulbs, how much would it cost?
Without the labor involved, you know, just taking that out.
Include everything.
That's what you want.
Including lunch breaks.
Well, I don't know that number, but I can tell you what the price was for the lights without the labor, and it was about $9,000.
Okay, so we're spending, it's costing us $10,000 for how many lights?
Thirty-three.
Seventeen, sixteen, okay.
So, and my question is, I mean, we spent money on an extra corner, we spent money on some other modifications, no telling what our engineering costs is. And my question is, when does this end? And yes, the story out there will be, he voted against it to begin with, and this is salary rate. That is not the case. I'm just thinking, hey, if I buy a car and they, and I say I don't like the lights, they tell me that's my car. If I buy a house and I don't like the bulbs, they tell me that's my house. And yet, when we do the square, those are ours, and yet, we get to pay $20,000 because we didn't look at the drawings.
Well, had I known that y'all didn't want those lights, I would've said something, but I was just matching what was there, so.
You're here to serve. I get it. But my point is, hey, it's Thanksgiving. We can get turkey pans and put behind it, and it'll deflect it away from the buildings. It's, you can hold a light bulb out in the middle of nothing, and it doesn't reflect off anything, and it looks much dimmer than if you stand it next to a building. So these pictures we have really don't do a whole lot for us, because it just looks like bright lights on a picture. And I drove down there, and they looked about the same, but we don't have a building next to it. You take a flashlight in a dark room and shine it out in the middle of nothing, it just looks like a beam. If you shine it against a wall, the whole, the whole room lights up. So I'm wondering if we're chasing our tails on this, until we get the reflectors. I'd rather see us get the reflectors at a much lower cost of $19,000, see how that works.
And Mr. Mobley, and you're, in your statement there, I did talk to another mayor of another community that had went and put some softer lights, amber light, whatever there was, but they don't, it doesn't really affect the downtown area unless there's no traffic and all the stores are closed or whatever, then you see that type of light. Because once you put, you put headlights, you put store lights, you put all the lights to the square, you put cars driving around, you don't know what type of lights you have. They're all, it's lit up. Now, if it's a park, and there's nobody around, or if the downtown street is, if it's vacant, which we don't want that very often, but once at night, then you get, then you see the difference in the lights, in the shades of the lights. That's just a little extra information.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Allen, I know you want to speak.
You know, I agree 100% in.
With me or him?
Oh, with, with Mr. Mobley down there.
It's not me or you, it's, I work for you all.
But, no, let it all go outside.
Go ahead.
That's the first time I heard tonight that there's any problems with the lights. And you said it was reported back, and they painted it black and all that stuff.
That was in the alley when I first got here.
But wouldn't that throw a red flag up for who are painted or people and say, you know, it may be too bright, maybe we need to?
You can blame me, I don't care.
I'm not blaming, I'm just saying, it's not gonna end here. Next thing's gonna be another 20, 30,000, another 40,000.
Let's hope not.
I agree with Mr. Mobley. Let's get a reflectors and try them, and if they don't work, then we'll use those lights somewhere else.
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
We're talking about two different issues. One is the lighting that's going into some of the businesses. And then we've got one being that the luminate of the existing bulb, by some, is perceived as way too bright. So the change in the bulb is to create a softer lighting environment down on the square, given that we've added so many additional lampposts. Now, it would be nice to go back in time and tell the engineers, when you start making these decisions, you need to take us through the process, because the council was never, ever taken through this process of the type of lighting that was never given us as an option. They never was pointed out that we were doubling, even though it was on the schematics, that we were going from 16 to 33, and what might that do? So that's how that all became what it is today, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
I have a hard time believing any city councilperson up here looked at going from 16 to 33, and nobody realized there was gonna be more light on the square. Does that make sense? When you're putting twice as many bulbs out there, who didn't think it was gonna be brighter than it was?
Mr. Mobley, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that.
Well, I'm sorry, that's what you said. So what did you mean?
What I meant was that there was never a specific discussion that we were going from 16 to 33, as far as I recall.
Mr. Mayor?
Council, Councilperson Reiner?
Oh, I'm gonna throw another little caveat in this.
Please do.
My overall impression is, I agree with, starting with the reflectors, let's see how that works, because it's the less expensive option. I have a problem, I don't have a problem with ambiance, I'm a girl, I'm all about ambiance. But changing what we've already ordered and installed to something of this nature for $18,000, here's, here's my question. If we spend $18,000 now on ambiance, we've already spent a lot of extra money fixing curbs and other things, if we have a maintenance issue that comes up again, if we have a maintenance issue that comes up again where we need to spend additional dollars and we've spent our money on ambiance, I think that we would be remiss in not slowing this down a little bit, because we might have to go back to the taxpayers to fix a bigger problem at some point. I would prefer, how long do the bond dollars last? I think it's three years? We have three years to spend the money?
We typically spend them in three years, and after that, there's some IRS reporting that takes place. So we try to dispose of all the funds.
So?
But we can't spend the bond funds on maintenance, we can only do it on purchases of equipment.
Of items, okay.
Capital improvements, yeah.
So?
And that's not a problem, but I understand what you're saying, and the shields, we can, the deflectors, we can get here, I'm good, whatever y'all wanna do, but.
Okay. Council, any more discussion on this item?
I would just like to add that those two areas, we disconnected the lights in front of the Nutshell Bakery, because it's right there by their window. And you know, a blackout shade or something would eliminate a lot of this too for those folks, but, and we also disconnected the one in front of the 1890 grill. So at some point, when we get the deflectors on there, we will get those light fixtures energized again, and you'll be able to see the difference.
If no more discussion, council, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to deny.
We have a motion on the floor to deny the request for the additional, or the change of the lighting for $18,925. You have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Councilman Mobley. We have a motion and a second to deny the request as stated. Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner?
Aye.
That is denied, we will, we will not be going forward with the lighting. Our next item is to consider approving the, oh, one, our next item is to consider casting a ballot for the election of three members of the Hood County Appraisal District Board of Directors. As you know, council, every entity in Hood County was given the challenge to give three names, and we submitted three names, everybody else submitted three names, and now the names that have came back to us are those names of the candidates that are in the running for the three positions. What I'd like to do is, in front of you or on your notepads, you've got the list of the people that are in the run. There's seven names. What I'd like to do is go down that list, every councilman has three votes, and I'd like the council members to give me your three votes, and Carla will be keeping track of the votes and also how many times councilpeople have voted. Hopefully, with that, we could come out with three candidates with the top votes. So I'll start down the list here with Walter Baldry, and I want to show a hand of how many, how many councilpeople select Walter Baldry. Hold your hand up high, guys. One, two, three. Carla's gonna get the name, so you can only vote three times. Justin Dever, one. Dave Eagle. Mike Franklin. Council, don't waste your votes, you still got some votes here. Mark Jackson. We have one, two, three, four, five. Terry Johnson. One, two, is that what I'm seeing? And Bobby Mayberry. One, two, three, four. Carla, did you catch that? Nobody over, double bid it, double voted, did they? Yeah, we, Mike Franklin. So with that tally, we have, we have Mark Jackson with five, Bobby Mayberry with four, and Walter Baldry with three. So those will be the selections. I will entertain a motion from the council to select Walter Baldry, Mark Jackson, and Bobby Mayberry as the selection from the Granbury City Council.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen?
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on these nominees? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The names will be submitted to the appraisal board, Walter Baldry, Mark Jackson, and Bobby Mayberry. Thank you, council. At this time, if you hadn't talked enough, we're gonna turn it over to the city manager again to do an information and operations report, if you would, please, Chris.
Hey, I just wanna say, y'all could've voted and saved all that discussion. Okay, first thing, I wanted to just give you a little report on the permitting and code enforcement department, staffing and other issues. I wanna remind y'all that we are a reactive type department when it comes to code enforcement, and I would encourage y'all to, citizens, to utilize our website. We've got a link at the bottom of the homepage, if you wanna file a complaint about tall grass or something, fill that out, and it tracks it, and it records it, and it's logged in, and that program is designed to escalate, and if it's not getting answered, and it's not getting results, it moves up through the management chain, and eventually, we will get that resolved. So it's a great tool, and we're also looking at including another one to make it even better in the future. And you can also send in those reports through the I Love Granbury app. Our website is on there, and you can click on that citizen request tracker there as well. And it's a great tool for citizens to let us know where there's code enforcement issues, tall grass, junk vehicles, dilapidated buildings, trash, debris, rubbish, whatever needs to be cleaned up. We've got basically one code enforcement officer that's responding to all that. She also inspects all the restaurants for health and safety issues, and so we can really appreciate your participation in that. And I know that some of you councilmembers get calls and things from citizens. Don't be afraid, just shoot me an email, and we'll put that through the system and let them deal with that too. A lot of times, when I get notified of a claim or complaint, like yesterday, or this morning, bright and early at seven, I had an email that somebody had sent me through the night, and I was able to go by and look at it on my way to work, and then when I got to work, I went to code enforcement, and they had already issued a citation to that person. It's just the person complaining doesn't know that. And so there's things that are going on that we are on top of, but it doesn't look that way, because it's really a private matter. We're sending a certified letter to a property owner that may or may not live here, and follow up with a citation if necessary, and sometimes even a property lien for the maintenance where we have to do it ourselves. So in order to do all that, it's sometimes... So, in order to do all that, it sometimes takes as long as a month to get that accomplished, so... Anyway, that's why I wanted you to know, and then, also, we're extremely busy in inspecting literally hundreds of inspections in a day. And so, these guys are busy, and so, if this continues, we're probably going to be looking at needing to get some more staffing in that department for code enforcement and, you know, building inspection. So, the guys are doing a great job, and the gals are working hard, and everybody's working together as a team, but there's a lot of work going on. As you see all this development going on, you got to realize, there's, there's at least twelve inspections on every house, so, that's a lot of trips out to that job and checking it out. And commercial is, everybody is much commitment as that is too, so... I was going to talk to you about, and it'd be good to do this in open session so that citizens would hear about what a public improvement district is and a tax increment reinvestment zone, and we're going to try to put that on a future agenda. I've, I've asked a consultant to come and tell us about what a PID is, a Public Improvement District, and how those are designed to work as economic development tools, and also, a tax increment reinvestment zone. It's typically used in a commercial area. But, the next meeting is when I'm trying to have those, that consultant come. He was sick, so I, I hope he's well by then, or he can get over his flu or whatever he's got, but he would've been here tonight, but we just couldn't pull that off. So, I wanted to let you know that, you know, as we're working with some of these projects, there's some tools out there that we can be using, and there's been a desire to revitalize some of Highway three seventy-seven commercial district, and we need to maybe look at some of these tools, or, or maybe just something as simple as Chapter three eighty Development Agreement that we've used in the past. So, we've got a little education to go through to, to get up to speed on what's going on, and on that. I will call on Rick, if he would, give us a short update on the water treatment plant and the water distribution line projects.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'll try to be brief, I do like to talk about this, though. Our new surface water treatment plant is online. I'll cut right to the chase, I don't want everybody's running through some people's minds. We haven't purchased any water from B R A in a little over two weeks, so, that's good. We are at a low demand ti- time of the year. Our groundwater system is about a little over a million gallons on average right now. We've been pumping out of the new water treatment plant a little over half a million gallons a day. Having said that, the microfiltration units on the lower level of the plant are full operation. That is a treatment that pulls the larger solids out of the water. It's good drinking water, we've all been drinking it now for, for several weeks. I'm happy to report that the reverse osmosis, which is on the top level, which is the real good tasting water, we've got that started as well. And so, we are at the, we have the opportunity currently to pump approximately a million and a half gallons a day out of the surface water treatment plant. Having said that, our construction manager at risk project, or as the public likes to call it, the blue pipeline project that's going around town, some of you know these projects are connected, and the main connection point is in front of the water treatment plant. We're upgrading the size of the distribution lines, how we move water around the city. I'll come back to the plant in just a minute, but the, the pipeline project, the eastern part of this, the sixteen inch, which starts at the scout camp, winds its way around to the Catholic church on Highway four, winds its way around to the new Acton Highway, and all over towards James Road, towards Acton Middle School, and back to three seventy-seven. That section of the C M R project is almost completed. We've got a new scout camp pump station, we're waiting to come online, and that should happen in the next week. A lot of that's going to depend on some of the SCADA and some of the automation to make those connections possible on that. The disinfection's complete, the pressure is there as well. On that side of town as well, the Meander Elevated Storage Tank, some of you may have seen, has gone up, out on the top of the hill out there. So, that'll provide new volume and capacity and better pressure on that side of town, hopefully. There's some valving that's taking place along three seventy-seven as well. Back to the water treatment plant. Right now, we're working through, we are in startup and training, we're training our operators. We've never had this before, so this is new, we're blazing new trails for these guys, and, and we've got a new plant superintendent, has experience, and he's well versed in, in running this plant, and we're thrilled to have him. And we're, we're pedaling as fast as we can to try to get our staff trained so we can work around the clock and keep this plant in operation twenty-four seven. And I think we're going to get there pretty soon, and I think next week will be a critical week for us. We hope to have the R O plant up, at least one of the skids operating at full capacity, and that's big. We continue to do a punch list, if you come down there right now, you'll see a lot of construction, a lot of demolition going on. We're tearing down the old plant, it's not a real safe place, otherwise, I'd have some of you down there right now moving around. But there's a lot of things happening right now, we're, we're receiving a lot of shipments daily to make the plant operable in different ways, from furniture to lab equipment, plumbing parts, some electrical parts, chemicals, our bulk storage chemicals, we're finally up to speed on that, that's the tanks you'll see sitting outside. Also, lost train of thought. One of the big connections that, as I mentioned earlier, that the C M R project and the water treatment plant is the high service speed pumps are going to be connected out front to put the water into the distribution system. Right now, we've tried to time this to where the plant and the C M R project were completed about the same time. I'm happy to report that the water treatment plant was, had a schedule in this respect, and we actually have, right now, we can pump more water than we can put in the system. So, that's a good, that's a good problem to have. Also, I'm happy to report that the water treatment plant is under budget as well, so... I know we fell a little bit behind in some people's eyes about the timing of this, but we're thrilled that we haven't purchased, purchased any water from B R A in a couple of months, so...
Couple of weeks.
A lot's happening down there.
Couple of weeks, right.
Couple of weeks, I'm sorry. Let's see, you'll see fencing going up, putting up fencing, the gate installations, we're doing small things like, Rick's helping us to get internet in there. This system is a closed ethernet system for the obvious reasons, for security, we don't want anybody getting in there and operating our system, and little things like the cable company getting internet to us. We're going to cut some new lines out front for driveways and have a, a new driveway out there. There's a lot of little things going on moving forward.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, I'm, and, I mean, one more thing about the hospital line.
You said you were going to keep it short.
I'm trying, I know, I love my job, I really do, I really do. And, and it's such a good project, projects, I should say, but out west where the hospital line is, that project is not going to be finished with the eastern project. That, that project is started out at the Knox one tank, which is out on the Peluxi Highway, we're coming down by the hospital. As many people know, you hear the constant hammering, there's a lot of rock in that part of town, as everybody knows. So, we're winding our way around to Lead and May Andrews Elevated Storage, around that neighborhood, and we're coming down by Brian Gappin's, around one forty-four. And then, we'll go down the, the ramp, and come across the bridge and hang a line on there, ending up at, at Hoff Brown, that's a twenty inch line. That should be completed sometime in the spring. And all of this being said, our capacity and our volume and our pressures around town will be much, much improved for many, many years to come, okay?
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. So, that was an earful and a positive update. We love you, Rick. And the next item I wanted to just let you know is the police department staffing. You remember, we, we worked on salaries and what have you for officers, and for the first time in a long time, we've got staffing up to the, the budgeted number of staff. And so, this is the first time, they're, they're not all on duty yet, they're in, in training, but we're excited about having these new folks come online, and, and I'm also working with Mitch to develop a future staffing need requirement for the future, as we've grown quite a bit. We have not increased staffing in, in over six years, that number's remained the same. And so, we will be looking at that in the future, and I just want you to know that we're extremely pleased that, that I believe the, the hard work that the chief's done, recruiting, and also, the pay adjustments that we were able to provide has, has got us where, where we're beginning to attract some people again instead of run them off, so, that's good news. And then, the final thing that I wanted to let you know, we kind of touched on earlier, is the merchandising policy for the downtown sidewalks. The Historic Preservation Commission met and have come up with some general merchandising guidelines that, that they have developed, and we will have that on our next meeting, meeting agenda as well to talk about. And so, again, this is going to be a change for people because until we surveyed the property and identified for sure that the city owned those sidewalks, we'd been letting people apply for permits to, to put things out there on their sidewalks, like benches and flower pots or things like that. So, what our goal is, is to have a uniform downtown where the pot plants that are there are maintained and kept, and, you know, that have seasonal flowers or whatever, where they're all uniform, and, and right now, I walked through there today, we've got some pots, and these are privately owned pots, and they're empty. We can't complain about that because they're their pots, and then, some of them have beautiful fall flowers or Christmas flowers in them already, so that's looking good. So, we'd like to clear, clear up our sidewalks, declutter them, and have a uniform hardscape look, and we'll, we'll talk about it at the next meeting. That's all I've got for you.
Well, thank you, Chris, for that update. Before we go into executive session, I do want to just remind the, the community, the citizens, you know, we've got a big celebration going on this weekend, the downtown square is going to be full of folks. I have had phone calls from the Metroplex concerning, or asking about our lighted parade, and so, I'm looking forward to a big crowd down there, so you want to get out there early and get your place to stand or sit with the benches or whatever we're going to be doing, but there's going to be a lot of folks, so I hope to see everybody out there. At this, at that point, we're going to go into the executive session. I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened into this open session, and that the members are all present. The city council will now go into the closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section five five one oh eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development, and section five five one oh seven two, deliberation regarding real property. We will go into executive session.
About ten minutes, I think, open to...
City council has reconvened into open session, there was no action taken in executive session. Counsel, is any more discussion at this time? I will make one comment, I was asked to tell all council members, and I failed again, but make sure that, on the new speakers, Rick's been monitoring it, make sure that we speak right into the mic because he can see the level of our sound so that it gets to the city secretary, so... I failed to do that for Rick, but now have fulfilled my requirements there. So, if there's no more further, further action, this council meeting is adjourned.